This meeting to order. If you are able, please rise for the pledge.
No.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Allenbos.
Here.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Here.
French.
Here.
Mayor Shippers.
Here. Okay, I would like to open this meeting with a statement. Announcement, I suppose, is how it was presented. So before we begin tonight's meeting, I want to acknowledge the public concern regarding the status of the partial term council seats connected to the recent election and let you know that the council has received and reviewed a confidential legal opinion on this matter. Because of the level of public interest and because tonight's published agenda does not include some of our normal procedural items, council may wish to consider amending the agenda now at the start of this meeting. This could include adding the routine approval of the agenda and the approval of minutes, as well as determining whether council wants to address the election-related issue this evening. Of course, those decisions are entirely up to the council as a whole. I would like to thank everyone in attendance and the general public in advance for your patience as we work through this carefully and responsibly. Now, before we move forward, I'll open the floor for any motions regarding the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and while I appreciate the agenda that the city manager prepared, I 100% think that we need to include the routine items and that we need to discuss the election issue and the charter issue tonight. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda as follows. One, add approval of the agenda immediately after the announcement. Two, add approval of the minutes from the last October meeting immediately following the approval of the agenda. Under the city manager's report, I'd like to add an item C, a report concerning the November 2025 election. And under, and after that, under city council business, I would like to add a new item titled "Council Discussion About Charter Section 3.6." Now, the first two items, I think, are routine. The other two are not actionable. If anybody on council needs me to further explain my motion, I will, but I think these additions to the agenda will ensure that we maintain our normal procedures and fulfill our responsibility to discuss the charter issue and the election issue.
What are we calling, item C?
I would like to call item C "November 2025 Election." And I'm looking for a support to my motion.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, having said that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support, as amended, support, yeah.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held October 20th, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for October 20th, 2025.
Second.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that takes us to the PFAS update. Nope.
Not in the agenda.
Oh. That takes us to public comments. Thank you. So, public comments. You have three minutes. As always, let's treat whoever our speaker is with respect and give them their three minutes. I will let you know when you are reaching your time.
I'm Bill Barnett from Stimson Street. I'm here supporting Art Stevens, who came here in October, told you that the city was basically violating the charter by not holding a required special election for the three appointees. For the city to never respond to this notice and inquiry and your actions tonight are all troubling. This was covered up, just like the PFAS issue in the industrial park. Here we are again. A special election should have been held in May, August, or November. The city voted in February to end these terms that you're sitting up at your chairs for right now. The city passed a motion. You folks voted on this, most of you. The city charter ends these terms. There was a required election that you missed. It's a violation of the charter, in my view. Those that were responsible for that need to step forward, explain their actions. This was never disclosed to the public. I think that was very unfair in an election situation. No answer came forward. Those that knew of this violation and didn't tell us should step down. Over 2,000 voters were denied a chance to vote at one of those three elections. We deserve truthful answers from each of you. Candidates were denied an opportunity to run. This mistake changed history forever. It's irrevocable. There needs to be a full and complete investigation conducted by a neutral third party. It cannot be your city attorney. The community deserves answers to these questions. Why this was hidden from us, this mistake could have swayed elections. Now, we have a tainted election affected by a serious charter violation. We deserve truthful answers from each of you. Thank you.
I'm Michelle Trivieri on Pennsylvania Avenue, and I just want to congratulate David Powell for winning the election, and I also want to congratulate everybody that tried to, you know, ran in this climate, this political climate in the United States and elsewhere. So, congratulations, and Carla, and Scotty, and everybody. And anyway, so I hope we can all move forward, and I get where people are talking about the charter because we have the United States Constitution, we have the Constitution of Michigan, and of course, our governing body here locally is the city charter and the codified ordinances. So, I'm confident that everybody will review everything and do the right thing. So, thank you, everybody, and thanks. Sitting on the mayor's advisory committee for the last eight months, I sure learned a lot. There's a lot more than just city council meetings. These guys are busy all the time. So, if they're, whether I like you or don't like you, I have a lot of respect for you. So, there you go. Thanks.
My name is Carla Moore, and I live in Cadillac. And so I have a whole bunch of questions. I'm trying to figure out why we have Ms. French and Mr. Hopkins up there, but we don't have David Powell up there. It seems to me that if they won the elections, and so did he, they should all three be seated together at the same time, not just, you know, randomly. Some other things, Mr. Allenbos, I was wondering, I didn't get a chance to ask you before the election, but two different occasions, you said something about, to the effect of, that you were not happy with how things have been going the last four months or six months, and I was wondering if you could maybe clear that up, and if it's something that you can fix now or going forward at some point. Ms. French, did you hear back yet from the state regarding the campaign finance rules that you broke?
We don't comment at this point.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, I forgot. Okay, all right. And Ms. French and Mr. Hopkins, I remember clearly, months ago, when I said that you're either part of the solution or part of the problem, and here we are with more problems centered around both of you, and I'm just curious as to why that is. I remember that you said you wanted to be part of the solution. I don't know why it is so hard to do things right the first time. It seems like no one puts the citizens first, like there should be no doubt in anybody's minds, like citizens come first. I got 47% of the vote citywide, and that speaks volumes, you know? And that doesn't mean I did a good campaign, or I did this, or I did that. It's because the people want something better, and so I'm not going to be here to deliver, so I expect you guys to deliver that, you know? They're looking, they're watching, just so you know. And it seems like the council works for Marcus. I know he's the city manager, but you guys are supposed to be in charge, so maybe step up to that and own that a little bit. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Art Stevens. I came here tonight to congratulate you on the agenda that was presented, and in shock that it isn't. I also want to make it clear, I know some of you get upset, and you've made it clear you don't like, why come to the public meetings when you sometimes try to get a hold of people for four months and no answers? I started this question in June. I finally came in October, very similar to the PFAS. You did tonight, I wish you would have waited for public comment, and some that didn't want to take time to listen, but there are two things you did. It is very clear, and the Cadillac paper did an excellent job of displaying past action on this. You guys, it's very clear how we did elections for Robert Ingalls, how he got in, and how John Minehart and Tom Dyer. And then this comes out. I know Robert did have a conversation with me about needing to follow the charter, but you cannot violate state and federal law. Those appointments, and it was deemed right in this meeting, you could go back and look, was till the meeting on November 4th, I'm sorry, the election of November 4th. You have an appointment, and you're shaking your head no, but go back and look. It's either you guys did a little trick and thought, we'll trick this in, or not, but the public was under the November 4th. It said that that was when the election would take place. The appointments go till that date. Anywhere else, unless it's the U.S. Supreme Court that has a lifetime, you get appointed for a length of time. We do that even with our committees on this city. And you take an oath, you have to take an oath, you get sworn in, and that coincides with an appointment. Tonight, there was no swearing in. If you were sworn in until November 4th, there should have been three swearing in. They did it any time a special election, and they did it after. That didn't happen, because you can't swear someone in that wasn't appointed correctly. Now, it was either a real trick to slide this through to December 31st, but if you go back to that meeting, it was deemed that there would be an election on November 4th. People like me, I know I hear this, were the troublemakers, were bringing out problems. This was also to help bring this forward. We could have addressed this if people contacted back. It was mentioned tonight, there was a legal opinion. I'm really curious, when? Was there a meeting of this? Was this a legal opinion? I don't ever remember getting one when I was on council that was just handed out. Was there a meeting that had this legal opinion, and when? I think that this is very concerning. I was here to congratulate you because the agenda that came out looked like you were saying, we better not take any action for the next months.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Last year, you went a month and a half without meeting, and there was no problems.
That's your time.
And I also wanted to thank Sandy. None of this has to do with the clerk and their efforts. They did an excellent job.
Mr. Stevens, thank you, that's your time.
I don't know how you, you weren't even sworn in to cut me off.
Thank you, that's your time.
Okay.
That's your time.
Yeah.
My name's Randy Lindell. Live on Howard and Cadillac. Let me finish this up here real quick. Just real quick, just on the lighter side, with the new regime coming in and that, too. I know it's a touchy subject, but I would really like to see, come wintertime, which we're at now, to make Cadillac a walkable community citywide, and I'd really appreciate it if we could get our sidewalks plowed for, we can be a walkable community all through this wintertime, and just not certain select areas. I'd like to see the whole town be done there, so. Anyways, another thing I'm battling is doggone, and I've done, wrecked my yard four times, Mr. Northwind comes and blows all the neighbors' leaves in, so I've done over 50 bags of leaves this year, and it's a good workout, so, but it's just a never-ending, you know, you get yours and the neighbors and everybody, but, and I do appreciate the street department for the effort that they've been trying to keep on, the leaves on the street and all that, too. So, that's important, so. I really wish that the city council, mayor, city manager will leave our city ordinances and charter alone and leave it as it is, and not adjust them and stuff like that. And just real quick, on my house during this last election season for city council, I do have, in a couple of spots at my house, no trespassing, no soliciting, and I get flyers, and I place my no trespassing, no soliciting signs purposely, for I do not get bothered, along with my cameras and that, so, but I've been, been barraged by that, but anyways. And I really wish that we could keep the city of Cadillac as it was at one time, and the small-town atmosphere, and the camaraderie of what Cadillac used to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else? Now, let's go on to our next thing, which is the PFAS update.
Thank you. We do have a couple items this evening this year. Do you want to do your update first in the video, or?
Yeah, I'll do a quick update. The, I don't know if you've heard, I think it was in the paper, that the state of Michigan did their comparative study with the PFAS of the three labs, of the Eagle Lab, the Cyclo Pure Lab, and then a third lab, I think it was, I'm not sure, I think it was Merit Lab, was the third lab that they did PFAS testing, if you did not read that report. Basically, all the labs tested the same when they tested the water. They got the same results, pretty close, I mean, close enough that you don't make a never mind, so, the, which brings to question those few outliers that were high, and then when they retested, they were non-detect, so, you know, they're probably, they're looking into why that stuff happened, but all three labs did come back with good results when they were tested against each other, and similar results. So, currently, out at the LDFA, we are doing our quarterly sampling, and to, this week, tomorrow, actually, they're going to be doing the PFAS sampling on that quarterly sampling, which is something new out in the area that the EPA wants, so, thought that fit right in with this PFAS study here, that they're doing that. And the quarterly sampling should be wrapped up this week for the LDFA, and the numbers look quite promising, everything we've seen out there. And then, other than that, we have a video that we had made about the LDFA.
This is the story of Cadillac, Michigan, a community committed to protecting public health by responsibly managing its industrial past. Since the 1990s, the city of Cadillac's local development finance authority, or LDFA, has successfully managed a massive, multi-decade cleanup of its industrial park, targeting legacy contaminants like volatile organic compounds and chromium. This diligent work has delivered clear results. The remediation for chromium has reached completion, with that contaminant now at non-detect levels in the treated water. The LDFA has drastically reduced discharge amounts, protecting local waterways for decades. However, cleanup for VOC contamination, which has substantially reduced VOC levels, remains ongoing and is expected to continue for another decade or two, thus requiring continued local LDFA funding. Then, a new environmental threat emerged, PFAS, the so-called forever chemicals. Unlike the previous defined contamination, PFAS was a new, until recently unregulated challenge. The issue arose when the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency requested PFAS testing in order to complete the chromium treatment portion of the cleanup. This request came just as the LDFA was trying to close out its work on chromium. The risk of potential multimillion-dollar costs for a new PFAS investigation would unfairly burden limited local funds designated for the original specific cleanup of chromium and VOCs. PFAS contamination was not the basis for creating and funding the LDFA. To make a responsible distinction, the LDFA sought legal advice. They formally clarified that their responsibility and the funds raised through local taxation should be limited to the chromium and VOC cleanup within the LDFA cleanup area. This was a clear, prudent position to wisely manage limited funds, maintaining a boundary and ensuring local dollars raised for one specific purpose were not immediately overwhelmed by an entirely new national crisis. Agreeing to test without this clarification, when no PFAS had been linked to the original sources causing the chromium and VOC contamination, could have been interpreted as the LDFA accepting full financial accountability for a problem outside its original mandate. This would have diverted critical funds from the ongoing VOC cleanup and potentially forced the city or its taxpayers to assume the costs for a costly and widespread issue. The LDFA simply clarified the limited purpose for which its funds were raised. This strategic clarification has coincided with the efforts of the State Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle, and the Michigan PFAS Action Response Team, or MPART, to step in to look at the PFAS issue beyond the LDFA area. These state agencies are equipped to review the full extent of PFAS and determine which persons or entities may ultimately bear legal responsibility for investigation and cleanup. The clarity sought by the LDFA has helped focus current efforts on state and federal solutions. MPART, working separately with the city's utilities department, is providing immediate relief. Residents in some areas outside the LDFA cleanup area where PFAS has been detected have been connected to the clean municipal water supply or provided with free water filters. The city is also working to seek other funds for further expansion of its system to other PFAS-contaminated areas. This measured response is protecting the progress being made by the LDFA, safeguarded local funds, and ensured the health of its citizens remains the absolute priority. Despite the limitation of LDFA funding, the LDFA where feasible is agreeing to limited additional PFAS testing in the LDFA cleanup area and offering to continue limited extraction and treatment of PFAS-contaminated groundwater within a portion of the LDFA cleanup area, even though a source or cause of this contamination is not determined. The LDFA also has worked with the city to ensure that no water consumption and use will occur within the LDFA area, which is already subject to an ordinance restricting groundwater use and connection to the city's municipal water supply. Cadillac's experience demonstrates successfully managing legacy cleanup, followed by a prudent, responsible clarification of duties when facing a new crisis. Furthermore, the treated groundwater from the LDFA is verifiably clean, with PFAS detection significantly less than drinking water limits, securing a safe future for all residents.
And that's our latest video we had, so.
Thank you. Okay. All right, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. A few items under the report this evening. First one is in regard to the upcoming joint planning and development meeting that is being scheduled for January 26th at 6:00, during a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. We're looking for a couple of volunteers from the city council to sit on it. This is a part of our requirement as we are trying to become redevelopment-ready, certified 2.0. And so, Teresa, is there anything you want to add to that, or?
What we're going to do is just offer a snippet of what each commission has been doing, just a synopsis, and going to present that, so there's all transparency.
Is there time to make this appointment at the first meeting in January?
Yes, that's what we planned on.
Okay, so we don't have to take any action on that tonight?
Nope, you do not.
I mean, yeah, there's no action to take anyhow.
Okay.
Just an invite.
An invitation, okay.
So, looking for a couple people that might be available at the end of January.
Just so you guys know, I am on the board of review and cannot serve on any, is this an official city board that I'm not allowed to serve on, or is this an informal thing, like the advisory?
So, it's, it's an official meeting between the Joint Planning Commission and the Planning Commission, and then, as I understand, there's going to be representatives from other boards and commissions attending, but it won't be a quorum of those bodies, so I don't see it how.
Yeah, okay.
I would assume the mayor would be someone on that, because the mayor is on the Planning Commission, so.
And I don't think I'm able to serve on that, but if you could double-check to see if that is under the, because the board of review does bar me from serving on other city boards, so. Otherwise, I will do that.
And there you go, just plant the seat, so you can address it again in January.
All right.
The second item is, just let me scroll here to it. Again, it's a more of a heads-up that the Cadillac West Corridor Group is going to be holding their second annual Christmas tree lighting on Saturday, November 29th, at the Point West Mall. The event is going to be including music, crafts, and activities, Santa Claus, they're going to have a variety of different things happening. Starts at 4:00. Tree lighting that they're going to be doing is at 6:00, and they wanted us to mention this publicly, and certainly invite all of the city council to be there to enjoy it. I don't know how much turnout they had at their first one, but they just had an incredible turnout at their fall event around Halloween. That was a great success, and it's really exciting to see, you know, the buildup of the activity out there, and so, if you're available, please put it on your calendars. Again, it is 4:00 on the 29th is when it's going to start with tree lighting at 6:00.
Okay.
And the downtown side tree lighting is, again, going to be the Friday after Thanksgiving, so Friday of next week.
At 4:00, got it. Thank you. Okay.
Do it.
All right. Let's go to item C. Anybody have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay.
So, again, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As being discussed, without a doubt, an administrative oversight occurred that I must apologize for, and for any and all confusion, disruption, or concerns and issues that this may have caused, please note that there is no cover-up, there's no conspiracy, there are no efforts underway to somehow be noncompliant with our charter. Simply, the partial term ballot was not a part of that November 25 election, nor did any petitions get received by anyone running, or just anyone in general reach out to us as, reach out to us as well. Our organization strives for excellence in Um, our organization strives for excellence in everything that we do. Um, frankly, we're all very upset and quite embarrassed that we simply did not catch it prior to the July filing deadline, um, that being the need for a partial term ballot, which is a term essentially covering the balance of this month in December. Uh, again, it was a complete oversight, uh, and one that was likely caused due to the very unique circumstances, uh, we found ourselves in. Specifically, how council positions filled by appointments were the same council positions that were terming out and automatically going to be on that November ballot. No one thought they have them listed twice for a partial term lasting through the balance of November and December. Um, in the past, prior council vacancies, for better or for worse, uh, occurred essentially midterm and a partial, and a partial term ballot was made available without any issues. Um, certainly, should another vacancy occur in the future, for a seat that is automatically going to be on the November ballot because it is terming out, staff and everyone involved is very much aware that a partial term spot will also need to be on the ballot, and an oversight like this should never happen again. So, Mike, did you want to add anything to that?
So it was, I, I have a question for Mike. It was, um, it was mentioned that we should have done it in, um, let's see, in May or August. Um, do we, uh, from my understanding, if there is, if there's no other, nothing else on the ba- I, how does that work? Um, because in the past, there were other things on the ballot. It was the next election in the, in midterm in which that those seats were, were filled and the people ran for those. Um, in my experience, it's never been at a general election and that we have never held an election just for, to fill that, those interim seats.
We never called a special.
We never called a special election. Are we, are we required to call a special election, or is it the next election that is, that we have? I always thought it was the next election we have.
The charter, um, says it's the next ensuing citywide election.
Okay.
Whether you called a special election, that could be a citywide election, um, but, and I'll rely on the city for the history uh, of that, but, um, but I don't see anything in the charter that required you to call a special election. Um, there is a timeframe in, under Section three point six, which talks about, um, that election, whenever it is, has to be at least sixty days, um, prior to when that, or after when that vacancy occurs. So vacancy occurs at least sixty days, then you could hold an election.
Okay. Okay.
And I, I mean, I do know mine was in November, but there was a significant amount of time, two years and, and several months left, um, when I ran for my partial term seat, which was a significant amount of time.
And I believe we had one during a, um, primary, um, election.
Election, right. But your seat, that seat was not also up at that time. We had two more years. It was seat the, the, the one that for both Scotts and Ruth Ann's wards are up at this election, and that has never occurred before. So you were gonna fill a, a two-year, so a partial term, and that's why you had to run for that.
You might be edging into your new business item? Which is discussion, I wouldn't share.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I think so. So, that would be, can, would we just segue or into that? Let's have a, a discussion. Yeah, do you wanna?
Um, so we are, are we moving on to, um, are we on the City Manager's Report? Is that what you're saying?
Let's move on to the discussion. Yeah. I think it's just, it's like, yeah, missed it.
Yeah.
So, um, okay. So now, we have a discussion about where we go from here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll definitely start. I'll go ahead. Um, and I guess what I wanted to, and this is the discussion about, um, Charter at Section three point six. I guess what I wanted to start by clarifying, I wanted to start by clarifying and building upon the comments I shared, um, with the newspaper. And I'm gonna reiterate, uh, most of those thoughts, but, um, there's a lot of confusion and misinformation, and I know that it isn't easy to understand, um, the, the, uh, mistake that was made or, um, how she, how we should move forward. Um, you know, I'm trying my best, uh, I'm trying my best myself to understand it, um, and interpret the language of the charter. And my statement, um, last week that I gave to the paper focused on one simple principle, that the city charter governers how council, governs how council vacancies are filled, and the plain language of Section three point six says that once an appointment is made, a council member shall continue to hold office until successor is elected and qualified. So first, to address one of Art's issue, issues, I want to be clear that no motion made by council can change the charter. So if earlier in the year, someone referred to an appointment lasting until November, or if a motion was worden, and worded in a way that suggested as much, um, those comments do not and cannot amend or override, uh, the city charter. The charter determines, um, the duration of an appointee's, um, service. And it says, "Appointees continue to serve until successor is elected and qualified." That's the controlling law. That's what Section three point six says. Second, the charter lists several things. It does tell us when a council seat becomes vacant. It says, um, the conditions for a vacancy, things like missing four consecutive meetings, or moving out of the city or the ward. Um, none of those, uh, things listed in the charter that the charter says created a vacancy, um, occurred. None of those conditions occurred. The charter does not say that an appointed term ends if the city doesn't run an election. If the charter intended a missed partial term election to create a vacancy, it would have said so in Charter three point six when it listed the four other things that created a vacancy, um, under the Appointment section, but it doesn't. Nothing in the charter says a missed partial term election creates a vacancy. Third, the charter does tell us how long an appointed member serves and what their term is. And I've said this a few times, the wording is very direct. An appointed person serves until successor is elected for the remainder of the term and is qualified. That's an event. It's not a date. That means two things must happen. Someone must be elected specifically for the remainder of the current term, not a whole new term, and then that person must be sworn in. These conditions were not met in this past election. The remainder term seats were not on the ballot, no one filed to run, and no successor was elected or qualified for those few remaining weeks. So the idea that these seats automatically become vacant on an election day, whether the election day was November, August, or March, um, also has absolutely no basis in the charter. Um, I think, you know, um, this isn't something that I prepared, but what Carla Moore said about David's term and how that's different. Um, the election of hold terms, I believe, are governed under Section eight point seven, not the same section with vacancies. And his term starts on January first, and this section on vacancies or appointments is, um, continuity-based going forward. It's not meant for you to serve, um, before your term, um, starts. Um, th- this only goes, uh, you know, one way, in one direction. Um, and then qualified also means, I think, that your term, uh, has begun. Uh, so if your term begins January first, you can't be qualified on a date before that. So I think the charter addresses, um, the issues in, uh, the opposite way, um, that some people are suggesting. I think the charter requires appointed officials to continue serving, because no successor was elected for the remainder of the term. I think the charter language actually keeps these seats from being vacant. And I believe the appointed council members are obligated to continue serving and voting on council. Now, that's what I think the charter says. We heard from the city manager about what happened, and if not following the charter procedure got us to where we are today, I fail to see how not file, following the charter language again is gonna make it any better. And I mean, the solutions, I, I've heard proposed solutions, things that sound fair, um, they're definitely appreciated. They're logical, they're great solutions, and absolutely none of them, again, have any basis in the charter language as I see it. You know, that's why I voted the way I did tonight. Um, that's why I, um, uh, pushed out my comments to the paper. I think that's all I have to say.
Tough act to follow. Made sense.
Is this our chance to discuss?
Yes, yes, if you have something, please offer.
As an appointee, I, I feel badly that we are at this, um, procedural misunderstanding, um, I, uh, of, of what is a truly lame duck session that we are currently in. It's, um, but the goal is, uh, to maintain the spirit of the, of the charter as Robert, I feel just, uh, more than adequately described. And, and it's also a fine gray line that we are all walking, um, towards the best outcome for the situation that we're in. Um, this was, again, uh, nothing that anybody planned for. I think the assumptions were made that the appointed seats went to the end of the term of the appointment that we filled, which is why, in my mind, and I guess most of us, we thought we were serving till the end of the year. Um, and that apparently may be open to, uh,
Interpretation?
Yeah, interpretation, uh, of the charter, and hence why we're having all this discussion. And, um, and I think the best way forward in the s- position that we're all in, meaning council, is to, uh, be gracious and do as little decision-making as possible, but to continue to hold these meetings, uh, for the good of the public and the opportunities to bring, um, have interaction, uh, and with staff and with, um, edu- educational or informative, um, opportunities. I've suggested that perhaps going forward, um, we could have some spotlight, uh, uh, meetings from various groups from the public to best use, uh, make good use of our time together uh, so that we could, um, hear from other community organizations that are doing the good work within the city to be informational for council as well as the general public and, um, make some good use of our time. Uh, that doesn't involve decision-making, decision-making that, uh, would call into question all of the issues of the situation that we're in. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Well, I'm good.
I don't know what I would add to what either of them have said at this point, so I guess I am good.
Yeah, I, I think Ruth Ann's comment is, is very wise too. I think, you know, um, knowing that a mistake was made, um, m- me personally knowing that I'm continuing to do the right thing, um, I also don't want to move forward as if no mistake was just made, so, you know, um,
Yeah, as well.
We, we do, we are obligated to stay here. I do think everybody's obligated to continue serving and voting. Um, but tha- that does not mean that we have to, um, yeah, take up anything significant in the end of the year. Um, as Art said, we, we went last January without meeting. Um, we get by just fine. I think Ruth Ann's, um, idea of highlighting some community, um, things is, is a good idea. She was just recently elected. Um, you know, Scott, you too, David, I think when, when you, um, bring, or, or when you, when people vote for you, when people pick you, um, you should, you bring your own personality and you bring your own flavor to it. And what Ruth Ann is saying about highlighting some of the organizations she's, she's involved in that are important to her, the messages she wants to get out there, I think that's the perfect way, um, to start December if we do, if we can pull that together, so.
Already working on it.
So I think that, um, moving forward means that we need to move forward. Um, first of all, for me personally, the thought of having been done in November brought me great glee. I was like, what? What? Um, and then, looking, looking at what, the needs of the city, looking at the needs of the community, we do need to continue the work of the people for this interim, for this, this short time. But as, as I mentioned before, we have never had this kind of situation. And so we are, we are doing the best that we can mindfully. Um, we will not be doing any major votes, changes, things like that, but it is important that the business of the city continue and that we continue to do that. And you can disagree with, um, with Robert's interpretation, with my interpretation of the charter, um, and that's okay. And, uh, but in the position of decision-making, in, in this position that we are in, we have to go with what we think is best for the community and not leave us with nothing until January. As was stated, um, I look forward to your term beginning in January. I look forward to what you bring to council, um, and to me not being here. And I also look forward to all of us, um, learning a lot from this, staff included, that things that, you know, it's like, who would have thought that we would have had to have a ballot where you have to vote twice for someone? Um, it's, it, it would have, it would be confusing. It's just, it's, it was so beyond, um, you know, my thoughts of that. And we have never called, in my experience, um, I may be wrong, but I doubt it. We have never, um, did the expense of a separate election to fill an interim. We always went until the next election. Elections are very expensive and, and, and lot of work. And so we go to the next citywide election to fill those appointments, which is, is what we did. Here we are in, in this kerfuffle with, um, terms not starting till January first, and that is absolutely in the charter. Never in a general election has a term ended on election day, and never ever has it set a specific date because of that changes. So, um, I think we just need to, to go with this as best we can and continue to do the business of the community and the city, um, with everybody's best interest at heart. There was nothing, nobody was trying to slip anything through. This, this election could have turned out completely differently if, um, these candidates did not win their seat. And we'd be having the same conversation, but in a different context. Um, I think that part of my decision with this, the fact that the city, um, voted to retain these appointees tells me that they have confidence in these appointees to serve. And for them to step away until January first and then begin to serve again and put all the business of the city on hold seems ludicrous to me. So, in, in that case, um, since this is the outcome, this is what I think we should do moving forward. I don't know how we, what we do now. This is just a discussion.
Just a discussion.
Just a discussion. So, it's any, yeah, Brian?
I thought we had an interesting chat about what it takes to change the charter. Could you explain to everybody?
Yeah, you're prepared to h-.
I might need to kick it to, to Mike.
Mike? It's not quite as simple as it sounds.
No, you have to convene the Charter Commission, who, um, then makes changes to the charter. It would be voted on. But before it goes to the election, goes to the, uh, Governor's Office for approval, gets reviewed by the AG's Office.
Yeah, I had no idea.
So there's no, um,
Nothing lo- it's not just a local process.
No.
It's a big deal.
There's also no, um, mechanism for an amendment. You're saying you have to call a full convention and do a full review to change it all?
You could propose an amendment, which would then go to, again, the Governor's Office for approval prior to the election.
So we can propose an amendment without the process you described, or with, with the convention and committee?
No, you could propose an amendment to the charter, uh, that would go on the ballot, so it's a voted measure. But it first has to go to the AG's Office, who serves as counsel to the Governor's Office for review.
So that involves us, um, voting to support an idea. You generating language that would make it onto a ballot, and then the people, um, and then the, um, Governor's Office approving it, and then the people-
Before it goes to the ballot.
And before it goes to the ballot, and then the people of the city deciding to approve it or not approve it.
So we cannot just arbitrarily choose.
If we, if we wanted to, um, have an amendment that says, next time there's a vacancy and an election must occur within six months, and if there's not an election, you do have to spend the money, like, that would be simpler. You wouldn't have to go through the conventional process, though?
Correct.
The convent, okay, okay.
Yes.
That's not as bad as a big convention where you have to look at the whole thing.
So that's something to look at in January.
Yeah. Yeah. But there also was nothing, back to the administrative part of it, if council had decided after, after the sixty days was up and the appointments, that we wanted to do that expense, we would have made a motion, got a support and voted, and then the city would have moved forward scheduling an election in April if we wanted. Is that, is that, we, you know, if, so an appointment, let's say an appointment, that we, we come up with, we, the same scenario again, and somebody has to resign in February, and we don't want to go through this again, we want to schedule one immediately, right after the sixty days is up, in April. Like, city has, we have the authority to do that, it's just expensive.
We were appointed on March seventeenth.
Okay, well, I mean, you have to wait the sixty days, but once the sixty days is up.
Probably not.
Probably not.
Probably not, because the election code was changed to require even special elections to occur on regular election dates.
Okay, so the February, the...
Which are August, November, May.
May.
Yes.
Is there a February one, two, or no?
There was a February primary, but I'd, I'd have to look at the election calendar.
So you have four months to choose from, based on the, okay, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at. Okay.
I don't know that a change will be required. I think this situation probably going forward will never happen again, even with the current language.
Well, the city's gonna, hopefully the city will outlive all of us.
Well, yes.
And so it's important, it's important...
I hope so.
It's important to not just rely on institutional memory, but to put it in, to codify it, to have it so that if, you know, when my grandchildren are mayor, yeah, they'll never do it.
One of the things, one of the things I didn't like is I have no problem with the appointment process, but I didn't like when we had to pick a new mayor. So we, we didn't like the idea, and a lot of people in town struggled with the idea that you didn't automatically become mayor, that we were picking a mayor.
Right.
And I know a mayor is just one of five on council, but in a symbolic way, that was, that...
That surprised me as mayor pro temp as well.
Yeah, and, and I, and so, I mean, maybe we, maybe we do in the future get feedback and see if there is any appetite for these amendments, because I was definitely unhappy with that process. I don't know how the rest of the public felt about that. I think the mayor pro temp should have, the charter should say that the mayor pro temp gets promoted and then we, and not only that, the mayor pro temp should be promoted for the remainder of the term.
Yeah.
There shouldn't, she should, there's no way that an elected council member, when appointed a mayor, should be counted as an appointed official either. So there were a couple of things about that process that I didn't like, that I don't know if people care to fix, but I'd be open to it, so.
Okay.
Good suggestion.
That's a good one, yeah, the mayor's.
We've learned a lot this year.
Oh, we sure have.
Okay. So where does that take us?
Minutes.
That's it?
We are back on public comments.
Public comments.
I think that's at the end of our, oh, minutes, yeah, zoning board of appeals, yeah, that's right.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Got a bunch of minutes.
So there's, oh, my thing went off. We have minutes from, where are we? From the zoning board of appeals and Cadillac-Klam Lake joint planning commission as well. Okay, that takes us to our second public comments.
Bill Barnett, Bill Barnett again, very disappointed, this is a very sad day in city government, and this will go down in history, what you just did. I'm asking for an independent investigation by someone not on this group right here. You can hire an independent attorney, most cities have that in their charter, if you're going to change it, maybe you can put that in there. So there's some other way to look at this. The charter was not complied with tonight. You guys have kept this quiet since October twenty first, and actually, Art's been trying to tell you this since June, but nobody will call him back or write him back, June. And he came on October twenty first and told you, there's a problem. He just sat there quietly, threw the good of the order, board comments, nothing's come up. Since that time, you guys issued a press release right before an election, you interacted with press, your staff did, totally improper. And yet this stays quiet. How do you stay quiet with this? Now that you have acknowledged a mistake, which is not procedural, it's a charter violation. Where's the accountability? When is that going to come? One mistake after the other, no accountability, no change, the community's been split for twenty-five years. Can you bring them together? Can you do something that will bring our community together? Can you do it? I don't think so. So, I think you've acted dishonorably tonight. You changed your agenda on the spot, surprised everybody, you're all five voting on things. Robert, come on, you made this motion to allow the three appointees to stay in their seat. You should be recalled for that. Mr. Ellenboss as well, you're a good friend of mine, and I'm sorry to say that. I'm saying that you should be recalled, you two are eligible for it and should be. You blew through the charter, you guys violated it. You voted in February and said when they ended. The charter says when they end. You blew it. You made a mistake and you sat on it, just like the PFAS stuff. Your pattern's terrible. You all should resign. This is the most despicable act I've ever seen by a public body. Shame on all of you, what a disgrace.
I just want to say back to the first annual tree lighting last year in Cadillac West, Mayor Carla Felkins was there, and, and we made introductions to the business owners, and it was at what used to be called the Sands, very icy, so it was pretty well-attended as far as like the weather was concerned, but this time, like you said, it's going to be in the mall where the little Michigan coffee company is and Lake Lures and stuff, so hopefully everybody will come, because those business owners over there, they're waiting for you to come in and get some coffee, and so I hope everybody can make it and the weather cooperates. Caddy Bear was there, Caddy Bear had to help with the lights and everything, so we had a nice Santa, we have a brand-new Santa this year, so it'll be fun for the kids, and I was really happy to see, as I spoke before, about the harvest days, it was a great turnout. So anyways, happy Thanksgiving. See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Art Stevens, I'm back since my three minutes got cut off. I did want to recognize, I, all this said, the actual election itself, the clerk, amazing job, her staff, the deputy clerks, they run this where we can feel confident in an election. This is by no means a conversation on this, she does an excellent job. This, the concern, though, tonight, again, is, you know, Robert brought up about you got to follow the charter, the good conversation. If that was the case and you didn't have to worry about state law, we could have done the May election. It was just brought out, the reason that the sixty-day rule is because there's a state law that changed election timing. And so otherwise, we should have just done it in May, that would have achieved that part of this right here. But your information will be good, because maybe the Bureau of Elections can learn from your statement that, that terms are unended. There's no, you don't have to worry about it, because you did, and I know that the mayor shook her head, but in your minutes that you guys all approved, it does state that those appointments was until the general election in November twenty twenty-five. The video will show the same exact wording. So when those appointments were there, anytime you do an appointment, and we do it with our boards, otherwise, someone doesn't have to fulfill a two-year or four-year term, they could keep serving. There's, there was a time that they were appointed for and they got sworn in. If that wasn't November, then there was something odd that they would slip that in and put it till December. Every, you talk about past president, every time we had a special election until that meeting, the following meeting, there was a swearing-in for those new members, because it's very clear that the term ends on that election day. Robert was sworn in, unless you want to say the video and minutes are wrong, they've done it every time before. This was, this is a big issue, I don't want it to be perceived, because now there's a loophole. In the future, even though we say this, we can do this again, they could just not have elections for, for these, and people could stay appointed for three years, if you go under that analogy. There's a term, and you have a length of time. Everybody has it. And that length of time was through November fourth, and you're sworn in under that oath. Three point seven, it's a charter, you're following the oath of the constitutions, the state laws, the codes, the city, the city charter. If you're swearing in only till November fourth, then you can serve beyond that, and you don't have to follow the oath. This truly was a time, in the legal opinion, everybody likes to hide this stuff. I don't recall when you had a legal opinion on this topic, and if you did, why did your minutes tonight have it set up for no voting? It seems contradicting to what you came out as. If that legal opinion says you could proceed.
Stevens, I'm sorry, that's your time.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody else, we'll go to good of the order. Oh, yes, Mike, sorry.
Couldn't help myself.
Sorry.
I am Mike Coy, and I live at one twelve Vine in the city, oh, my home. Just want to end this with something positive. I have heard so many positive things from friends that I associate with this town, various organizations, whether it be church, golf club, Elks, just people I have coffee with. And I, day in and day out, hear positive things about what's been going on in our city this year. And I look around, all the wonderful concerts in the park, we've done updates to our market, we've got Cadillac lofts going, so we're going to have over forty more housing units in town. The parks were beautiful this year, the few times I used them, the restrooms were quite clean, just so many positive, positive things. And I hear it all the time from friends who live in the city, my neighbors, I have a great neighborhood. And I got to honestly say, the issue with the charter, we had an election, we've got a new mayor, never met the person, but I've heard good things about him, we've got our city council members in place, so we've had our election, and we're going to have council going as is. And I got to say, amongst all these people that I communicate with and deal with, the issue of a possible violation of the charter, nobody really cares very much, because they see things getting done that are positive for our community. And keep doing positive things for our community, keep listening to people, that's all. Listen to the constituents and make decisions. It's, it's, I've just heard many, many good things, and I'm hearing some negative things, and I don't hear that amongst the people I hang around with, but that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Edwards, I live in Cadillac. I just want to know, if your seats are only occupied until the fourth of November, how come there's three of you still up there? You should be sitting back here with us instead of sitting up there.
Okay, seeing no one else, let's move to good of the order.
The only clarification I, I wanted to make was how the agenda comes together, because I did start out my remarks by saying that I do appreciate the agenda that Marcus put together in consideration of all the thoughts that are going on up there, but I, I reject that that's how we should move forward doing business, because he sets the agenda, but it's up to council to vote on it, it's up to council to run the meeting. And I didn't want to have a meeting where we didn't, believing how I believe, where we didn't approve the agenda, where we didn't approve the meetings, where we didn't have a substantiative discussion about three, section three point six, and about the election errors. So to suggest that my rejection of, of, of the way the city manager presented this agenda was part of a secret plan or improper, or the city trying to hide stuff, is not true. So I wanted people to understand how the agenda is put together and how the council responds to it once they see it, so. I hope that helps a little bit. Anything fun?
Some funny over here tonight.
Just happy Thanksgiving to everyone, be mindful and be kind. A lot of people are struggling, a lot of people are struggling. Help where you can and be good neighbors. Thank you.